January the 5th, 2016, meeting, the Jackson City Council to order. And I'll lead us in the invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise. Father, we come before you this morning just thanking you for this day. Thanking you for the breath of life that you gave us as we awoke this morning, Father. We thank you for being the great guide. You are the Alpha and Omega, beginning and the end. And Father, we thank you and praise you for that. Father, we thank you for just the way that you've continued to bless our city in this year that we're just finishing up. And Father, we ask those blessings for the new year, which is just beginning. Father, you wrapped your arms around our city this past year, and we thank you and praise you for that. Father, we're here to proclaim you as our Lord, our God, and our King, and to acknowledge your divine sovereignty in our life. Father, we thank you for those who are gathered here this morning. We thank you for our council, Father. Your word says that they are ordained by you to serve in the position that they're serving. So, Father, we accept that. Father, we just ask that you give us wisdom, strength, and discernment as we take care of the business of this city. And Father, we just pray that during this meeting, as we leave here today, that everything we say, everything we do, will bring honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call. And Anita, I think you can show that all council members are present here this morning. Item four is approval of the minutes of the December 1st, 2015 City Council meeting. Our council members received a copy of those minutes. And unless there are any objections, or additions, or corrections, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is the invitation for public comment. I know we have quite a few people here this morning. You'd like to be heard. If you have, you want to make a comment on any item under new business, once we get that item on the agenda, if you would make it known to me, stand up, wave your hand, scream, not loudly, please, but let me know that you would like to speak, and we'll be happy to do it when we get to that item on the agenda, if you would let me know. Can y'all hear this on?
No.
Any better? Any better now? Great, okay. So, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak on any item under new business, if you'll let me know, once we get to that item, I'll be happy to call on you and ask you to come up and address the council. We have no proclamations this morning. We have one recognition. Item seven, we have some members of the SOCOM organization here. And let me invite them to come forward. I think they have asked to address the council. So, if there's anyone here, y'all come on up. And if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself to council, and then you can make any comments that you'd like to make. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just pull that mic around there. If y'all would just identify yourself for the record, please, if you would.
To Mayor Gist and the council, we would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before you. We are the SOCOM Organization, statewide organizing for community empowerment. Long word, acronym SOCOM. My name is Martha White. I'm chairman of the SOCOM Organization, the local chapter. We have with us this morning other members. We have Mary Tipler, she's a co-chair. And we have a member, Kevin Jordan, who will be speaking with you this morning. SOCOM is involved in national, state, and local issues. You have a brochure that you've been given that gives you information about SOCOM. SOCOM was organized in 1972 in East Tennessee. But now we have chapters from East Tennessee all the way to the West, which we are the local chapter. And we're going to be speaking to you today about local issues that we're concerned about in the city of Jackson. And Brother Jordan, Kevin Jordan, and Mary will speak to you now as to why we are here, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Jordan, and I live on Highview Street, North Royal on the west, and Richmond Street on the east. And we have a big problem now with a lot of drivers coming through. They're driving forty, fifty, and sixty or more miles an hour. And we have no sidewalks. And people had to run to get out the street to keep from getting hit. And we have children in strollers, and ladies with their little ones walking with them, and they have nowhere to get when the cars come through their speed. So, we are asking the council for sidewalks and at least two speed bumps to break the speed. Even with the sidewalks, we still need something to break the speed. And we would like to have from North Royal to about 2:48 to have a speed bump there. And once we clear the top of the hill around 2:65, Highview, from there halfway down to the stop sign at Richmond to break their speed. Because we don't want to wait till someone get killed. If some driver lose control in the early part of the summer. Sister Gordon was walking across the street, and I was coming down, and I told her to run. And if she hadn't ran, this driver never broke his or her speed. They never broke their speed. By the time she made it all the way across the street, that car was there. And they never slowed down at the red light. They just made their right on Royal. And those are our concerns on Highview Street.
Thank you, Mr. White.
May I also mention that we have talked with councilman Buchanan on this matter, and he is looking into it for us. But some of the issues that we have in other districts, so that's why we're coming for the council, because not only are we concerned about our district, we're concerned about other districts also.
To Mayor Gist and the city council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today and taking the time to listen to us. We know, again, that Brother Kevin Jordan has spoke about an issue for East Jackson. And mine is to mention about Muse Park, the fairground park area. Muse Park, it needs some repairs on the woodwork issue going through. The bathrooms look like they can use a little update. The front entrance way could use some flowers. The main pavilion, it needs a little brighter, safe facelift. It would be good if we could just make it look a new fairground. It would be nice if we could have a walking trail, benches around the pond area for food area. The scenery is beautiful. It would be good to just add just a little bit more. The overall facelift can come from the planning department. We appreciate that they look into it. Also, I wanted to mention that on behalf of SOCOM, we all agree that it would be nice at Mount Olivet Cemetery on East Forest. It is already in the historical status from the state and the city. It would be nice to have a historical sign put up. And in that same area, we have Bridge Street. It is very dark at night. It actually would be nice if we could have that to be a one-way street going south. When you're coming off of Bridge Street going into East Forest, you got to pull on up into the street of East Forest to see the traffic coming left. And again, it's dangerous, and they be speeding. And last, it would be good if we could have more patrolling, more security on East Forest in that area. Thank you.
Thank you all. I think it would be good for us and the council and the staff if you all could take those comments and get it into writing for us where I'm not sure of all the locations that you've mentioned. So, it'd be nice if you all could just give us just a short synopsis of your concerns and where we'll have it in writing and be able to follow it up. We appreciate SOCOM and what you all do for our city. I've always attended many of your events, and you're very active, and I will appreciate you all.
Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, we're very proud of SOCOM and the things they do for our community. And Mr. Jordan and I have been talking with respect to sidewalks, and a formal request has been made for your street along with the project on North Royal. And Mrs. White, you have been a chairperson with SOCOM for quite a while. Your membership is strong, your community activities is strong. And we are appreciative, and we want the council to know that you are here for the community in order to do things to better our community. And we appreciate you.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you all very much for being here.
We just want the money brought our way rather than going north.
Was that money that you mentioned? We're looking for that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
And have a blessed day.
Thank you. The council would just allow just a moment of privilege for the chair. I had an announcement here and failed to make it. Let's see, I think on Thursday, it's Appreciation Day for law enforcement, Civic Center, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're going to honor those who deserve to be honored. We have a second Blue Strong event at the Civic Center, so I won't need to make that announcement and let you all be aware of that and ask you to, if you're so inclined, to show up and show our appreciation and honor to those who service in a first responder's capacity. Thank you for doing that, council. Under first reading, stand, if you would. Item seven is consideration and ordinance to repeal the municipal code relative to discount for early payment of property taxes. Title V, Chapter 3, Section 5-306 of Jack Municipal Code relating to discounts for early payment of property taxes are hereby repealed in its entirety. Mr. LeFlin is not here. He brought this to our attention. Obviously, in previous years, we have had a discount for early payment of property taxes. When the ordinance was established back, I think, in the 90s, our interest rates were high. It's a very convoluted formula on how those discounts are given. And in many cases this year, since our interest rates are down, and still will probably be down, many of the discounts amounted no more than a dollar for a $1,500, $1,700 tax bill. So, we're trying to just eliminate that part of the repeal that ordinance due to the convoluted nature of it and the minimal impact it would have on anyone's life. So, that's the basis of this ordinance on repeal. If there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to. I'll need a motion, and then we'll have a public hearing of this ordinance. We have a motion and a second. And this is ordinance on first reading, which necessitates a public hearing. So, I'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to or in support of this ordinance. If there is, please raise your hand. If not, we'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance on first reading. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration and ordinance to close an abandoned Vincent Street running between North Royal and Bertha Street, submitted by Ray Butts.
Good morning, mayor and council.
Morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This item was presented to the planning commissioner, and they are recommending approval of it to you. You have the materials pertinent to this close and abandonment request. Mr. Butts' company owns the property surrounding this street. It does not serve anyone else. And to consolidate his property and his businesses in the area, he would like to close this street, and we are recommending approval of it to you.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. Again, this is a reading, first reading, on this ordinance, and a public hearing is necessary. So, I'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration and ordinance to close an abandoned Bertha Street running between East Orleans and Depot Street, submitted by the planning staff.
This street is located in the same area. It's within the Butts Foods property. It never was really a street, never was improved as a street that we can find any information on. So, it was just basically a dedicated right-of-way. But again, it only serves his property, and he is asked to abandon this street. And the planning commission is recommending approval of this to you.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance on first reading. Again, a public hearing is necessary. Let me open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on this matter. Seeing none and hearing none, did I see a hand? Guys back in the booth, could y'all turn us up just a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one that wants to be heard on this matter, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second for approval on first reading. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four, thank you. Is consideration and ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Radio Road running off North Highland to a point 136 feet east of Rosenbloom Drive, submitted by Abner M. Taylor III.
You have the materials pertinent to this request. The Taylors are asking to close this section of Radio Road. They own the properties on both sides, and they would like to close and abandon this section so they can basically consolidate their properties and control their properties and do away with through traffic that's going through there. We had a traffic study done. We had input from Public Safety. And all those that have reviewed this say that there's no problem with closing and abandoning this section of street. So, the planning commission, in reviewing this, looked at that input and is recommending approval of it to you based on the input we could receive from Public Safety and the traffic study.
Okay, this is an ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion for approval?
Show move.
We have a motion. Before we second, let me go ahead and, again, this is ordinance on first reading. Let me open the public hearing. I think we have some people here who would like to be heard in reference to the passage of this ordinance. If there's anyone here who'd like to be, yeah, come on up, thank you. If you'd be kind enough, just identify yourself to the council and have a seat and speak into the mic.
I'm Martha Haley. I live at 102 Radio Road.
Okay, thank you.
Have lived there since 1960. We, as residents of Radio Road, do oppose the closure of our road at North Island. We have petitions from every resident on the road with exception of one lady who was ill and could not sign. We have petitions. The radio station did sign. We also have a separate petition from the Jackson Clinic. And I will ask, do you all have copies of those petitions? Everyone has those, okay. The Jackson Clinic, at Parkway, there is a daycare that's right there on Rosenbloom. And then the Jackson Clinic is located next to that. There is quite a bit of traffic with people trying to pick up their kids. You're having the backup all the time to let people in to pick up their kids. And I just happened to go up to the Jackson Clinic because their parking lot is behind their building. And so, I wondered how many people work there, you know, and about getting out because I knew that they used our road. There are 120 people that work in that building. Those people come to work, every one of them come at eight, and every one of them, they get off at 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. So, you've got 120 people coming out there. So, they use our road to get out on Highland because they all can't get out on Parkway. That daycare there, there is, that's quite a bit of traffic there. But as I said, we have to make room for them to come in. And they're in a hurry, and it's just like people at the clinic. They're in a hurry to get home, and they don't want to wait. Well, in fact, they couldn't wait on Rosenbloom Drive to get out. There should be two ways available for these parents to get there and for the employees there too. And I was wondering, if this was happening on your street, what would you do? Would you need two exits, or would you need one? And the feeling on the road is that the Taylors do own of that property, and they have offered to buy some property for me, for his. And I was told that the reason for all this, we did this. This happened once before, and the residents all signed, and it was stock. But he told me it was for the safety of his grandchildren. And so, that was the specific reason. But everybody in the neighborhood feels like they want their own little plantation, their own domain down there because they do have all the property. But people need to get to the hospital the quickest way. They need to get to their doctors. And there are elderly people. We've had ambulances that have to come after people at night, you know. So, we worry about that. And if it's closed for the safety of the children on that street, then I feel we ought to close every street in Jackson because there's children playing in the streets all the time. They have ball games in the middle of the street. They play at night. Some of them are not supervised. They don't know how to stay out of the streets. So, if you close one street for the purpose of saving the safety of the children, then you need to close all the streets. And someone mentioned that if they thought maybe that the cars were too fast, speed bumps could be put up. And also, we have two major businesses. We have the Jackson Clinic needing to have two ways out. We have the radio station, and they were the first ones to sign because they use that road often. The police, I was told that the police and the fire department recommended that this happen. I have visited Lieutenant Adams in the police department and the fire marshal Childress. They said they did not recommend this, that it would be okay if they did it, but it was not recommended by either of those places. And as I said, the two major businesses need, the main thing is 120 employees all leaving at 5:00. And one thing about, when you come up Radio Road, y'all may not have been there, you come up Radio Road and make a turn, and that turn goes on up to the radio station. And when you turn right, it goes to Rosenbloom. Well, I'm the only house sitting there. But if anyone comes up on Parkway, that road is not sufficient for two cars until you get down to the health department. All that area right there, you have to wait for the people to get up the road and cross over Radio Road for you to go down the road. So, that right there, to me, is sufficient. So, why would everybody else on Radio Road have to wait all the time to be able to go to Parkway? So, but I guess what I would say too, if I were in your position as councilman, and you were in my position as president of Radio Road, how would you want me to vote? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and continue the public hearing and see if there's anyone else present who'd like to speak in opposition or in support of the passage of this ordinance. Come on up, guys. If you'd be kind enough, just introduce yourself to council for the record.
My name is William Paul Phillips. I live on Radio Road back in 2009. Had they not had the way out on Highland, I wouldn't be here today. They told me I got there just in time. I had a heart attack 3:00 in the morning. If they'd had to went out the other way, I wouldn't be sitting here. And now, I'm dealing with cancer, and I have to go to Kirkland's every day for a while, don't know how long. And I just can't see them closing a street that's been there for years and years, and it's not going to help anybody but the ones that's wanting it closed. It's not to nobody's benefit. And as far as kids, since they built all the play stuff in front of the house down there, I have seen them out there twice, as many times as I go in and out of that road. So, I would say that's not really a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Good morning. My name is Eddie Morgan. I've been a resident on Radio Road for 62 years. And Radio Road has always been there. Rosenbloom's added extra after they started building up and coming out north. But my problem is this, is if the residents didn't have another exit, I could understand it. But they got an exit right beside Radio Road that comes out on Highland. And it was, you know, and even the exit that they have to one of the houses, it still goes out to Radio Road out that way. And as far as the kids go, they got five acres of ground right behind the house with playhouses and stuff on it. So, I can't understand that, you know, ideology of, you know, safety for the kids. If you close the road off, isn't it still a city street? And if it is, the city's got to maintain it, and I'm paying taxes. Why can't I use it? I just don't understand it because they build stuff on different sides of the street. But you want to control a whole community by shutting them out. And this is, you know, I know that we think everything that we do is for the good. But sometimes you have to look a little deeper and see if it's, if you're doing the human thing, if you're really looking out for your neighbors. Because as you can see, we've got two rows of neighbors back here that totally disagree with, you know, this idea. And so, I just, you know, I can't see it like he said. If an ambulance comes from the hospital, it has to come down Highland. Where they could turn right into Radio Road and be right on it, they've got to go all the way up to Parkway, play with the light. Then they got to go down, play with the traffic coming east on Parkway. Then they got to go up Rosenbloom, and then on Radio Road. So, Radio Road is going to be a no-end road if it's closed because it's not going to come out on any major item. It's just going to be stuck back in there. And that's not what it was designed for. Because there were houses previously on that property. And just because it was purchased by, you know, other individuals, they did not have a problem with it, and they were there for 40, 50 years. So, I just, I can't see them doing it. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
One more thing I would like to ask. Me living on Radio Road, who is my councilman?
Me.
That's what I thought. That's what the map shows. But you told me two years ago you wasn't. When I called you, you said, "I am not your councilman. I can't help you."
If I did, I'd hear it. Where they live on, where they live, where they live. And they did contact, in fact. And speaker, they called me. They told me what you wanted to do, what the problems were. I told her, "Check this out. I have a petition signed by all of them who are against it." For her to read it, your time called. When you all could address everybody. And so, I played fair with this. Now, I think, Mr. Pilot, you'll tell us something here in just a minute, and this will help.
Well, my wife pulled the map up on the computer, and it showed you as our councilman.
I am, yes, I sure am.
That's what I wanted to know. That's what I wanted to know.
Well, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for, for addressing the council on that, we appreciate you. Anyone else, we're still in public hearing and if there's anyone else who'd like to be heard on this issue, come on down. Sir, if you'll identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, counsel. I'm John Allen and I'm here to speak, uh, on behalf of the Taylors to support the closing of this section of the road. Radio Road, as many of you know, has been here probably before I was born. But it was also at a time when it was way out in the country, on the far side of Hicksville, Old Hickory Mall was not developed. And it was a single lane road that went up to a radio station, gravel at the time. Over a period of time, it changed, it was developed. The area in the back was developed and there were houses on the north side of the road. As time went on and development occurred and housing was provided in the back, Rosenblum Road Drive was put in to alleviate, uh, the congestion on that single lane road, which was not conducive to two lane traffic. You have to pull over to allow cars to get by. Rosenblum Lane was put in to allow people to have a safe entry and exit into the area. Uh, also as the Health Department and the clinic moved out there, that too helped in the congestion. Also over a period of time, the houses that were along Radio Road on the north side were demolished, uh, for various reasons. And over time, that house, those properties were bought up by the Taylors. They were wishing to, to maintain their properties, allow an area for their children and grandchildren to play. Uh, in concession to the concerns of the neighborhood, uh, everyone wants a safe haven to get in and out. The Taylors have agreed to put up click to enter gates at both ends of Radio Road that will allow ambulances, fire and police protection to go in and out should an emergency arise. At the same time, they wish to develop that area so that they'll have a place for their grandkids to play and to kind of stay, uh, in control of the area around their homes. I don't believe this will significantly impact the neighborhood. Quite frankly, it will give them a safer route to get out. If you look at the map, you have traffic going south from a major intersection, accelerating down Highland that will have to stop without a proper stacking distance to turn into Radio Road. That is an intersection where a lot of major wrecks occur. And the ability to go out Rosenblum and turn right or left at a slower pace will make a safer entry and exit for all those concerned in the back. There are no curb cuts from anyone other than the Taylors on Radio Road. There is no plans for development by anyone else but the Taylors on Radio Road. So, uh, as we have done, y'all have done with other areas where people, uh, control both sides of the road and no one has significantly, uh, caused any harm, we've allowed that to be closed off. And I think this is a reasonable recommendation by the Taylors and I ask you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Um, still in public hearing and I'll continue to call upon those who'd like to be heard. Come on up. Sure. If you'd identify yourself.
My name is Bridgette Love Morgan, I reside on Radio Road. Um, I've been there for seventeen years now. I married a Morgan and actually he owns the property there. Actually, when I go to work, I worked in here downtown, I worked for the Department of Children's Services. And actually it's easier for me to make a right, uh, and then make another right onto Highland opposed to driving, uh, to North Parkway because there's a daycare. And often when I, like I said, I go to the mall, I have to go that route because people are coming in, going to the daycare. I've almost had several wrecks going out that way because when they come into the daycare, they're such an inherent to get in and pull into the daycare, I'm there. So for me to go every morning to leave and go on North Parkway and make a right onto Highland and then have to go, that's gonna be inconvenient to me. Well, it's easier for me to go out, make a right, uh, or make a left on Rosenblum and then curve on the other Radio Road and then go straight down to, to Highland, it's like easy for me. And even when I come home, it's easier for me to come and make a left instead of going all the way to Parkway and make a left and then make another left on Rosenblum and then I have to go fight through traffic from people leaving the Health Department and also leaving the daycare. You know, it just seems like it's more inconvenient for me and it's easy for me to get downtown to go the route that I'm taking. But if it's blocked off, then I've got to go further around. Where the Taylors, they have access to either route. They can go left on the North Parkway or they can go right onto, um, Highland. So I don't think it's fair, they can have an option to go either way, but then I'll be stuck with one way.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else who would like to, yes, come on up.
My name is Cheryl Long, good morning, this is my husband Jeff.
Good morning.
We've lived on Radio Road for over thirty years. We've raised both of our children who are still there. We would appreciate it if you wouldn't block an exit, at least for our grown children. I've been a registered nurse at Jackson General for twenty-two years, five days a week, every weird hour of the day, coming down North Highland and turning left on Radio Road and have not had a single accident doing that. Okay? So I think that argument is not, doesn't hold water on that. Um, we've had the Sutherland's who's raised his children, they have raised their children on Radio Road. We have never had any problems, we've never had any accidents, our children were supervised and they were safe. And believe me, our backyard is nowhere near as big as theirs. We, um, we have at least three rows of residents who, and I worked last night, so giving up my sleep is tell you how important this is to me. Um, we have such a wonderful neighborhood and this is something I feel would take away from it. The other morning when I was going to work at six o'clock, there's six deer across the road. There's three deer in our backyard, there's little red foxes. This is a home and this is a community and we take care of each other. Closing this road, I mean, you know, we lived there when our neighbors across the street had to call for an ambulance. We lived there when Rusty Mack had his heart attack at the radio station and we had to get an ambulance there. It's foolish to me to inconvenience an entire community for one family when the greater good, I think, has been pointed out here and pointed out well by the people who it is gonna mostly affect. Rosenblum is a sweet little street, but you have to pull over and let everybody come up it before, because two cars can't go down that road at the same time.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, the, this idea about the congestion, uh, not being an issue, uh, coming out of Rosenblum, I think it actually is an issue certain times of the day, uh, especially around the rush hour, the, uh, Rosenblum becomes very, very crowded. I've, I've seen as many as had to wait on five cars many times just to get out there. And, uh, you know, having that alternate route through, uh, through the old Radio Road can alleviate a lot of that problem. It, it is very congested at times.
And if speed is an issue, I had to go from Regional to Kroger's down Channing Way and they have speed bumps. I, you know, and I have a Saturn, so if I didn't go really slow, I was gonna leave the bottom of my car behind me. So, I mean, that, that's an option that I think all of us would agree to. I don't particularly care for the idea of a controlled gated community there, but it's, it's, since safety seems to be the big issue, then I think we can look at other options rather than just closing off, closing off, uh, an area of access to an entire community. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Um, we'll continue the public hearing and see if there's anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter, speaking in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, hearing none, I think we have, we have a motion, we do not have a second, right? Is there a second to the motion?
Mayor, also let me add that, um, as a part of the ordinance, there is maintained a easement for the utilities that are present in Radio Road. If the, if the road is abandoned, the utility easement will remain for them to be able to maintain and, uh, those utility lines. Also, um, the physical barriers and the turnarounds that will be required with this closure and abandonment, uh, will, the design of that will have to be approved by the City of Jackson, so that's a part of the ordinance. Also, any future maintenance of those barriers will be responsibility of the adjoining property owners that, that, that are there. Uh, also, um, someone mentioned, uh, the city maintaining the street. Once it's abandoned, it will not be a public street maintained by the city.
Okay. Okay, we have asked for a second, is there a second to the motion for passage of this ordinance? Hearing no second, uh, the ordinance dies for that, uh, for that purpose. Thank you, Stan. Going to our second reading, uh, under item eight, it's consideration for ordinance to amend, uh, municipal code title seventeen, refuse some trash disposal, chapter one municipal collection system, section seventeen dash one oh one, dash definitions, and section seventeen dash one oh five, special requirement. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading.
So, second.
Motion to second, questions from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one voting against.
Okay, under new business, uh, the planning department submits the following streets for acceptance. Um, Rights Mill, section nine B, Highland Don Cove, a portion of Ram, Ravenwood Drive, Winchay, section sixteen and seventeen A, portions of Chelton Square Drive, Lancaster Cove and Stornawake Drive.
If you have any questions, these are streets that have made it through the process and have met all the requirements and now the final, uh, part of that process is that you accept them.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion to second, discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Motion passes with eight members in, uh, approving and one absent at this time.
Okay, item two is authorization for mayor to execute contract with Tall Oak Farm LP for the option and or purchase selected land for use in industrial park expansion. Um, council is aware of this process that we've been in for several months. And, uh, we drafted a volunteer, Mr. Danny Wheeler, to help us, uh, in acquisition of this property. So Danny, let me ask you to come up and I think we have the chamber president Kyle Spurgeon here to come up and, uh, Stan will help you with the overhead there, I think it's already gave you that, Danny. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor and council, good morning.
Good morning.
Happy to see you this new year. The land that we're proposing in this purchase is located on the southeast corner of State Route two twenty-three and Lowell Brownsville Road. That is south of T-Dot, South Mullins Corner, that gives you perspective of, of the land. There are actually four parcels involved in this. Two will be purchased, two proposing a five-year option to purchase. If you look at the map, uh, that's provided, the partial B is eighty acres plus or minus. And that purchase will occur in two thousand sixteen for twenty thousand dollars an acre. Second partial to be purchased, we just will partial right here, which is partial, uh, uh, let's say partial C, that purchase is scheduled in two thousand seventeen. That was the request of the seller that we split the purchase over a two-year period. The other two parcels that we will receive, a five-year option to purchase will be ninety-eight acres here on the right, which is, um, partial A. And that option to purchase will be at twenty thousand dollars an acre. The fourth partial, which is partial D, is a partial that fronts two twenty-three. The option to purchase that is at twenty-five thousand dollars an acre. The, once this document is signed, we will provide the seller with a twenty thousand dollar earnest money. Tall Oaks Farms will be able to continue farming the land that is purchased up until the time that an investor purchases and they have to take possession. There is provision in the contract for crop damage should we take that land before the harvest time. To, for this contract to be consummated and actual purchase to occur, there are some contingencies. One of them, of course, is your approval. The second is we have to receive, the city has to receive from the state a certificate of public purpose for borrowing money to purchase the land. That process has been started by Jerry Spohr and he's, he's working on that. That process takes a little time, probably three or four months for that to take place. There are some other contingencies that the land is suitable for industrial property. Be environmental surveys, make sure that it's environmentally correct for industry. Geological surveys to make sure that the land itself will support industry. And also archaeological and ancestral surveys will have to be done. If all of these are compliant and suitable for industrial land, then the purchase can take place.
Um, then the option is a five-year option on two parcels at, at no cost to the city?
The, the cost of the options actually is part of the purchase price and give us options for that.
And one quick question, what was the price per acre on, uh, lot C, on the partial C?
Partial C, twenty thousand dollars an acre. The two that we're purchasing are twenty thousand. The partial to the, farthest to the east is a twenty option and that it's on two twenty-three is a twenty-five thousand.
So you're saying that all, all of these surveys and tests and so forth are in the purchasing price?
Uh, it is option, it's a cost of a purchaser to go, to do all of the surveys.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the prices, the price per acre?
Yes.
Did we, we receive some type of evaluation whether that price per acre is reasonable?
We have had contact with other property owners concerning industrial property and this price is in the land. We did not have an appraisal personally.
Wouldn't, good morning, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't it be prudent to have an appraisal?
Uh, I think we could do that, I think one of the things that we would consider is what is the value of industrial property. And we know that there was some property that was sold, uh, in the title in, um, Madison West Industrial Park by the airport. That was in the range under this, of course, but it's farther from the interstate and had some, had some property issues that would drive the costs down a little bit, improvements that had to be made to the property. So we have, like I said, we are working with some other, um, property owners for some options in, in this process and actually what purchasing is is lower than some of the others are discussing.
And secondly, relative to the contingencies that you've mentioned, um, environmental surveys and some other things, are we putting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we have those surveys before we vote on this today?
We could do that, but this is an agreement with the seller and he's understanding that this deal can't go forward. I think it's important for our, and this probably would need to be addressed by Mr. Spohr, I think it's important for us to have an agreement in place to make it easier for our, our certificate to show specifically what we're gonna purchase and, and all of the things that would need to be done. Also, we will, before the application for certification is finished, we will have all of the surveys done, which is gonna be necessary for that. I think, I, I understand the cart before the horse, but, uh, it may be that these need to be done to expedite the certificate.
And I understand that and those are just issues that I raise for the council to consider. consider.
Sure.
Kyle, you want to share with the council the importance of an inventory of industrial property that...
If you were to ask the question today, do we have enough property to compete for industrial projects looking at Jackson? Fifty to sixty percent of the time, when we get an RFI request for information in, on a project looking at, let's just say it's a hundred miles around Memphis area, about half the time, we can submit on those. We are already experiencing a lack of an ability to respond to project requests because of being able to put together larger industrial tracts. Now, the projects we can respond on, particularly the property at the airport industrial park and the certified data center site at Tiger Jones, we can submit very nice property and can compete very effectively with that. The problem will be, a year from now, five years from now, ten years from now, if we don't take action today, we'll be sitting there and we won't be able to compete. Industrial development is not a game where you can go out and just decide that you want to acquire some property. This process actually has been ongoing for seven years. We started with eleven properties around this community. We've worked with nationally known site selection consultants, worked with the Tennessee Valley Authority, and obviously, Jackson Energy Authority was involved every step of the way. This property has been vetted. We have worked with the State of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. They are ready to help us start marketing this property as well as the Tennessee Valley Authority as soon as we control it. We cannot recommend this project today, or this property today, to anyone looking at this community because companies and site selection consultants and real estate brokers will not consider your community unless you control the property. And that means you either own it, or you have an option on that property.
Move for approval.
Can we have, we have a motion and a second? Any additional discussion? Councilman?
Going back to lack of appraisal, was that y'all's opinion that we didn't need to do appraisal, the price was reasonable enough so that just the extra expense we'd have?
Yes, I believe that was my opinion.
The other question, I guess, is why are you coming to the city for this and not the county?
Good question. In looking at land...
Join, even.
I understand. In looking at land for, to present to you, we were looking for land that was contiguous to the city limits. This land touches the city limits at T-Dot Owens Corning, so this land can be annexed into the city. And that was, that was the reason we focused on, on these, one of this portion as well as some others, but we can annex this, and as we option, buy the options, exercise options, it can continue to be brought into the city.
And, and probably another reason is that our good friends across the street purchased the industrial property right across two twenty-three from the airport, where we have a number of industries there. Most, Bodine, now the Kellogg's Distribution Center, it was purchased by the county, and the city did not participate in that purchase, so I guess turnaround's fair play.
Yeah, I assume the city owned it the weekend past that it be annexed to the city?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
My comment about this piece of property is, and I think Kyle will confirm this, for industrial purposes, it really doesn't get much better than this. It, it's close to the interstate, has great access, it's reasonably large tracts, minimal developmental cost by the industry, and it shows really well, I think, Kyle.
Yeah, when you, it's almost like when you're looking at beachfront property, if you're buying a condo, Interstate forty is the reason companies look at Jackson initially. That is the number one reason. Number two is workforce, but we would not be the successful community we are if we did not sit on Interstate forty. That's, that's just a fact. So the closer you can acquire property to that interstate, the more successful we will be, and putting together a large track like this, if you travel across the state of Tennessee, it's very rare to find this type of property. And you know, as you get into middle and east Tennessee, it's certainly not flat, and the developmental costs, as Danny mentioned, are certainly not what you would see here. So this will be, when we control it, it will be one of the top industrial sites in the state.
Okay, Mr. Spohr, anything legally we need to know about this deal?
Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
It's the first step in the process with this certificate of need, a public purpose that the city needs to acquire for its financing purposes. In response to some of the questions, some of the things that were being done in terms of site surveys and all are being done for that process also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Anita, I think. Any additional questions from council?
Very quickly.
Go ahead.
Just, is it possible for us in this process, I, I, I think it's beneficial to the city, I get all that, but just is it possible to have it appraised, just so we'll just have that as a part of all the information that we have?
I presume we could, as soon as I...
I, I just think it'd be prudent.
Certainly, at our process, particularly in perspective of certification.
I would, I would add to that, that we take into consideration during that appraisal process, properties in other communities such as Murfreesboro, Clarksville, Tupelo, North Mississippi, places that we may compete with, because what we're doing is we're taking farm property and changing it to industrial property. So just by doing that, we're going to raise the appraisal, but an initial appraisal may not be what you're looking for as high as it would go, because we're competing with other communities who are selling property eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars an acre.
Maybe a good idea to see if the, if the state requires the appraisal, and it, it is a difficult, a difficult process to go from agricultural to industrial property overnight. So that we'll, we'll see if, if the state requires that. If so, then councilmen will certainly, certainly provide that appraisal for them. We have a, we have a motion, a second, any additional comments or questions from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, in reference to the next item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that that item be tabled at this time.
Second.
Okay, that is item three. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read that. We do have a motion to table, and a second, recommendation for solid waste hauling award from the appointed committee. Committee is headed by Councilwoman Vicki Foot. We have a motion to table and a second to table. Any discussion from council? The motion is to table. The recommended, from the committee.
I'd like to just express one concern about tabling it. A lot of time has been spent by a dedicated committee to examine this very important contract. We realize the importance of it. Countless cumulative hundreds of hours have gone into comparing these companies. We had representatives come in, talk to us, clear up questions, misunderstandings. I don't know what more committee could possibly do in the next month to add any additional information. I certainly do understand if there are councilmen who, right at this point, do have questions. You, you don't want to vote until your questions are answered. We do have the people here that can answer all those questions. We have representatives here from Waste Management, from Red River. Those questions could be answered. Here's my concern, I don't know how the council would vote today if it came to a vote. I know who the committee that studied this will be recommending. I don't know how the vote will go. If it should go, go to a new company such as Red River, they need time to buy their equipment, get their employees hired. They don't have the equipment or employees right now. It's a new company. They need ti- time to get all of that done and go through the hiring process and, and get their route straight. And what we don't want is an interruption of services in August. So I don't know what's in the minds of the, the councilmen, and I don't presume to know, but if you do have most of your questions answered and can get the others answered today, I would love to see it come to a vote today for that reason.
I think we, we do have a motion to second to table. Let me just share this with the council. It's intended to chair, even though if the motion is approved to table, I still think it's a good opportunity for us and the members of the audience to hear any, any information from people who are here this morning, both from the companies and any other interested individuals that are here, because this is an item under new business, and we, we will accept comments from anyone who wishes to be heard on any item under new business. So if there's no objection from the council, regardless of how the vote to table goes, I'd still like to have the, the chair privileged to go ahead and ask these people to, to comment as to whatever their, their wishes are.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to what you're saying, according to where the vote go, if it's tabled, I don't think we should have deliberations or comments. If it's not tabled, then I think we should have people to speak on behalf of each company.
I think it's, probably that we do listen. We got people here that came out today, we got a lot of people that if we even have a meeting, they're not going to be here, but if we got everybody here today, it's an opportunity for us to listen to people. If you do have some leaning one way or the other way, you can make, change their mind, but I think it's an opportunity for everybody here to listen to what we're going to do and get explanation today and get further information if we need it, you know? But I think it's an opportunity to listen today.
A table is a table. If it's tabled, there should be no deliberations, nor speeches, nor presentations.
Okay, we have a motion to table the discussion on this, on this item, and a second to that motion.
Mr. Wallace has a comment.
Go ahead.
I totally agree with Councilman Dodd that, that even when you table it, one of the reasons we're tabling it is because we want to gather more information, and I think today would be a good opportunity for us to be able to do that. And I agree that we've had people travel, you know, members of the community that have come to the meeting today would like to speak. If we table it, that's going to inconvenience them to have to come back for a month.
Mayor, if I may, I, I think the vote would be tabled, but I, I think we could still hear from any interested parties. I think we could still have the opportunity to ask questions of either Waste Management or Red River, so I would disagree with Councilman Buchanan that if it's tabled, that we couldn't have that discussion.
I respectfully understand what you're saying, but you know what? If the, if you're going to table it, you might as well throw out the bees and listen to, be renewed.
Okay, any other, any other comments from council? You have a motion, a second to table the, the issue. Council, please vote. This is an issue to table.
The motion to table passes with five members in favor and four voting no.
Okay, the motion is tabled until our next meeting. It'll have to come off the table at that time. I'll expect one of the council members to make a motion to, to remove this issue from the, from the table. We do have representatives here. I think the, the theory of the, of the council was to gather information, any information from anywhere relative to this particular issue and this contract. I think any information we get would be useful in, in further deliberations and getting to a final decision. So let me ask, is anyone, we have representatives both from, from Waste Management and Red River. We may have other individuals who would like to be heard, so why don't we at this time just open it up? And first one up here, get up here, introduce yourself to council and make your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Richard Donnell. I'm a member of District Four. Councilman Buchanan is my councilman, and I appreciate the council tabling this matter until another meeting, and I appreciate the council listening to the people. I can't imagine why anybody would not want to listen to the people about a matter of this magnitude. My understandings about this whole matter is that companies have been on a contract. The contract is a multi-million dollar contract. There was a, a committee that looked into it, and that committee has come back and recommended one company over another, that the company that was not recommended, it's my understanding that their contract is about three million dollars less than the company that the committee did recommend. It's also my understanding that the number of points between the recommended company and the second company is about nine or ten points. So those are my understandings, and those understandings came from a newspaper account. Assuming those understandings are correct, then I think that the council is wise in putting this off, and that in the pending a final decision, that the community should be involved, and that the council should get input from the community as to what the community thinks about the whole thing. The company that's been recommended may be the best company, I don't know, but I only found out about this and knew about it, and might be my fault for not knowing about it before then, about a week ago. And because of the fact that it's so much money, and because of the fact that there's a difference between number one and number two, I would like to know about the companies, their diversity, whether or not they are willing to involve economic development, particularly in the African-American community, a lot of things of that nature that I would want to know, and before a contract of this magnitude is led to any particular company. And therefore, I would urge that either a public hearing will be held in Jackson where citizens can come out and voice their opinion, or that another committee would be appointed that will consist of one person from each of your districts, and let this committee look at whatever the other committee looked at and make a recommendation to you, or that pending the final hearing of this matter, that there'll be meetings, public meetings in each district, so that the people can come out, ask questions of the representatives of all the companies, and get a better understanding of what's going on. This is a lot of money, and I have no recommendation as to which company should get the contract. I'm not for either one. I just think because of the magnitude of the money and the closeness of the points that each one got, and the difference in the amount of money for number one and number two, that this would warrant more community involvement than we have thus far. So I thank you again for tabled until another time.
Thank you, Mr. Donnell. We have some company representatives here, so let's get them up here and see if they can answer your questions for you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Steve, Steve Smith with Red River Waste Solutions.
My name's David Cooper. I'm the Vice President of Red River, based out of corporate office in Dripping Springs, Texas.
Just a little bit of background, I, I know I've met a lot of folks in the Hub City. Thank you for graciously meeting with me. Over the last few months, we've spent a lot of time here and got to know the community and got to know each individual neighborhood, and we did a lot of research regarding this contract to get down, you know, to get our prices and our assessment down to the, the final, get our pencils sharp. So we're a third-generation family-owned company. We've been in the solid waste business for sixty years. We're regionally strong. We have the largest, the largest residential contract in the state of Tennessee with the City of Nashville. We just got a ten-year contract extension with those folks, so if you talk to the mayor and the council there, you will get a glowing review. Couple of things to, to mention, too, because there's been some misinformation, I think, about our proposal. The services are exactly the same on both proposals. It's prescribed down to the, the letter of how those services are to be provided. There's no variance in that. I think there's been some question whether we would do it differently than the current provider or not. That, that's prescribed pretty closely there. We have a couple of things that we wanted to talk about today. One regarding the, the scoring, I think John did mention, I, I think this has been provided to, I can't really see that with the scores, but yeah, basically, there's a one point six five percent difference between the two. This bottom part down here, that's the difference really, that one point six five difference. So there was nine point five points difference out of the maximum. So it's very close. And we're, we're not here to say that the other company is not a good company. Obviously, they are. They provide good service, and they, they have for, for a long time here in this community, so we don't want to disparage anybody's name in that regard at all. There was also mentioned earlier about, you know, appraised value when we're talking about property. I think what this bid process did was provide an appraisal for what this free market system and what this service is worth. The, we went through the process, and we, we came up with our valuation, and it's a certified by a performance bond. We are bound by bond to perform, to the letter of the contract, just as the current company is, but that's a hundred percent of the, the contract value. That's a large, large performance bond, and it's, and it's punitive if, if you... value. That's a large, large performance bond. And it's punitive if you don't. So that's important to know, that the services are exactly the same, the manner in which it's collected is prescribed by ordinance that you all passed. Really, there's only two differences in this contract between our bid and the competitors' bid. One, they have green trucks, we have red and white ones, and 3.3 million dollars difference over the life of that contract. And those numbers that Sam helped compute, we computed it a little differently, but those are his numbers based on that contract. We have the wherewithal to do this. We have commercial and residential contracts and customers throughout our service area that we provide this level of service to. It's not anything foreign to us. We respectfully ask that we're considered for this contract.
Yeah. And following the comments that Steve made, I think there's been a lot of information. And our goal in these processes, we compete for sizable municipal contracts all across the country. I personally have been doing this for 16 years. I've been in many, many states, many, many council meetings. And we are a small business company that started in 1953. The power of America and the power of the small business is what's here today. We can sit here and compete with large public companies that are publicly traded on NASDAQ, New York Stock Exchange. This is David versus Goliath. Red River is a capable company. We've got the experience. We're a family business. We've provided the council through emails, a copy of a letter from our banking institution, CoAmerica, one of the largest lenders of environmental financing in the United States. We have a surety letter that supports our bid to perform in this contract, that secures this contract in the amount of 100% of the contract value. The city of Jackson today is paying on an estimated $5.7 million for service. Our cost of service to the city of Jackson is about 5.7. That's what the annual bond would be. It would be protected. This contract will affect every business, every resident and tourist coming through this community each and every day. We totally understand that. We understand there's a risk in doing and making a change for you as elected official to do this. But at the end of the day, we're capable, we're qualified, we've got a solid management team, and we're looking forward to an opportunity. And we're blessed that you guys have given us an opportunity to come forward, to voice our comments and our concerns. And a lot of times when you have a change in service, people always wonder what's gonna happen, if my trash couldn't get picked up. Each and every day in many, many cities across America, people may change the contracts. There are new companies that get awarded contracts. There's people who lose contracts. We're well aware of that. We've got a record of success they're performing, of taking over contracts from previous companies. As a matter of fact, recently, Union City, Tennessee, we took a contract from Republic Services that they had held for 30-plus years in July of '14. The transition was seamless. And one other thing that's very, very important about a transition is the checks and balances of the billing services. The city of Jackson bills and collects from all residential customers and all commercial customers. We will perform a full audit of your entire billing record of your residential customers and of your commercial customers. Why that's important is because when you're doing billing and you're in magnitude of 1,500 commercial customers and 22,000 residential customers, the city needs to make sure that they're billing and collecting appropriately and everyone is getting billed and everyone's collected from. A lot of times what you find in transition, there's things that maybe could fall through the crack. Or a customer might have a different sized container and not be billed differently versus what's being billed. So it's a really good opportunity for checks and balances to look and make sure that you're billing and collecting properly. Other than that, it's people that put all this together. In any transition, every contract we've ever had, we offer first right of refusal for the existing workforce. We don't want to come in and bring someone from Nashville. We're not gonna bring someone from Texas to manage this operation. It's gonna be a local citizen from Jackson. It's possibly gonna be a person that's doing it today. Our wages, our compensation package, our benefits to employees are fantastic. We pay 100% of the employee's benefit. We have an insurance program, short-term disability. We offer a 401K. We've got a fantastic compensation package. And if we didn't, we wouldn't have been in business for the past 60 years. It's the people who make our business successful the last 60 years. It's not the company itself. It's not the management teams. People do the work. And the people who do the work in Jackson, the same people that are doing the work today, that could possibly do the work for Red River in the future. We thank you for your opportunity. We're open to take any questions or concerns you may have.
And David, I will add, because there was a question that I forgot, I'd been asked. We will acquire local property here and also have local partnerships with local small businesses and those kinds of things. We want to foster that relationship locally. We've been approached, you know, over the last month or two with those opportunities. So we're looking forward to that.
And Mr., your concern earlier about the time to put this together, I know it's a great concern, but the benefit here, this contract starts August 1st of '16. So we're looking at seven months. We've got plenty enough time to get the people in place, get the equipment acquired and put in place if the city chooses to bring in a new service provider.
Well, you've got six months since we're gonna do it next time, but still, you think six months is enough. You, I want to make sure I understand this. You have said you would hire every one of these employees.
You bet.
Currently working.
And that's no different in any contract?
And so even though your proposal didn't indicate you would need that many, you are going to hire additional ones, though?
Yeah, because our...
How it indicated previously.
The statement is, is we get here, we want to grow. We want to grow the community also. So you've got to have enough people to put this thing together. So we look at the comparative staff and the comparative equipment. We feel extremely confident that our staffing and our proposal and our equipment, our proposal is sufficient to successfully perform the contract.
Mayor, if I may, you gave a example of large cities that y'all do, but that's residential only. How about commercial? Who do y'all do commercial with?
Sure. You know, one thing that's really important to note is not many cities have a full franchise for residential, commercial, and roll-off. It's really unique. So that's why these type of opportunities are very, very competitive when you bid them out. Union City, it's an exclusive franchise. I think there's a little over 500 commercial accounts in Union City. Our military contracts at Fort Knox, there's probably 500 commercial customers there. Fort Polk, Louisiana, I think there's a close to 800 commercial accounts. Rapid City, South Dakota, we have 15 commercial accounts. 1,500, going back to that. But there's a list. I think we have over 5,000 commercial accounts in the seven states that we work in. We have 162,000 residential customers that we provide service for each and every week.
Okay, now another question that's come up, our comment that some of the constituents have made, and I certainly understand this. They said, if you can handle Nashville, you can handle Jackson. Is it not true in Nashville that you are providing weekly services, not twice a week?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly true. The twice-a-week service is a service that's, you know, it's kind of going away.
But we had it here.
I know you do.
And you would be expected to do that.
Sure. And it's just, it's hiring additional people, additional equipment to do that work. But we have a background doing twice a week. Twice-a-week backdoor is an industry and challenging level of service for residential customers. But it's the people who make it work, who as a company, we got to provide the assets and tools for our people to be successful. And I definitely believe we have the ability to do that.
And in your bid, you did include that you would need many more people for the twice weekly.
True, yeah. Because each truck will have a driver and helper per truck.
Okay, and you mentioned equipment, but you understand that the evaluation form that was used to evaluate all the companies, which is a standard form, it's used by the city of Jackson to evaluate every service bid, you know. I'd heard one day, you had just a different form for this, didn't you? No, same one we've always had. And in that form, rates count 20% on that form that we used and everything else counts 80%. So by the natural design of the evaluation form, whoever designed that form, whoever passed it, which is probably this group, determined that rates were not the most important thing. So that's why we drilled you so hard, as we did, and all the representatives, about your experience. And not just how many years you've been in business, that wouldn't be fair, because other companies have been in business longer than you guys. So that's not fair. But how much experience you actually had and the kind of services that our customers are demanding. So that was a part of the rating.
The rating system is fantastic. We've been through a lot of them.
So you agree with the rating system?
It works well. And I think Ms. White and the whole committee did a fantastic job. This council needs to come in, city staff, they did a fantastic job, probably one of the best jobs I've seen done in the past 16 years. If our price was 5%, 6%, we wouldn't be before you today because we know that's not enough for this community to make a change. But when you're looking at 10% to 12% on $3 million, that's what resonated with us. And I said, and we went back and looked through our performance. We want to make sure we can perform. We want to make sure that when we have a performance bond, that the owner and president of our company signs, says we can do this work for the amount of money we bid, we want to make sure we can do it. And after that committee meeting that we had, I remember Al made the comment, you guys are really, really competitive on commercial. I tell you what, that give us, we went back and looked at our performance, went to the expenses, the labor, the depreciation, and we're still confident today that performance will hold. We will make a reasonable margin. We're not here to take a whole lot of money and put it in wheelbarrow and take it out of this community. We want to take the money that we earn and we want to reinvest it in the community. And we've done that in every community we've been in.
And I don't think anybody on the committee had any doubt about any, we actually had four companies, you know, that we looked at. And there was no doubt that the three that we zeroed in on, one of them we had to disqualify and they didn't follow the specification. But you guys in Republic and Waste Management did. And it was difficult rating you, you know, it was very difficult. But there were some things that were not subjective at all. You know, I've heard this is very subjective. Some things were not at all. I mean, you guys had the lowest rate on commercial, you know, hands down. Waste Management had the lowest rate on residential. There's nothing subjective about that, you know, we can see that. The equipment, we looked at that. We were not so much caring about how many vehicles you had as much as how many specific vehicles you had to perform the kinds of service that we needed. And we did notice that you were much below in certain types of vehicles than Waste Management. So roll-off trucks, for example, according to your proposal, you know, you had fewer, about half as many. So those were some concerns. But understand, when we were comparing you, you know, we weren't saying that you couldn't do the job with what you've got right now. You know, you know that. You know that. We don't. You know that. But we know that the job being done right now required more vehicles in certain areas. So that's just really for everybody to understand, you know. There have been a lot of misunderstandings about it. And quite frankly, I was impressed with three companies. We don't talk about Republic. They're not here today. They were not far behind you guys. That was close, too. But that's how close all of it was. And we were extremely conscientious in trying to stick to the evaluation form. We didn't know how it was going to come out. We had no earthly idea. But the areas, as you pointed out, it was a difference of nine points. But those nine points were all in the areas other than rates. That's where Waste Management scored the highest in the references, the knowledge of the proposal, the experience, and, you know, the capacity to do the work. Doesn't say you guys couldn't do the work. But the evaluation form and the way we had to compare you, we obviously had to give to the company that had more experience in related work at our store. We obviously had to give to the company that had lower rates, higher score. So just a little bit about those dynamics so that people understand.
And what's a blessing about the process, the city has the opportunity to accept, to reject, and warn this contract whoever they want to.
That's right.
And at the end of the day, that's really what it's about. Our thing is, is there's a lot of money on the table. And is the city willing to pay 3.3 million dollars more for a garbage service? It's not like we're building a space show and we're picking up garbage.
That's right.
And it's a lot of money. And when you take that money, these taxpayers could possibly see an increase of what they have to pay every month. That's the only reason. We wanted the people that are watching this on TV or in this room today to know, the city has an opportunity to save 3.3 million or pay 3.3 million more for the same service that are compared to apples and apples. We're not talking apples and oranges.
It probably is one of the most important services we provide our citizens in Jackson. So I mean, taking the money in consideration, taking the services in consideration, could you talk about your experience? Because you said it was a unique challenge to provide backdoor pickup twice a week. Could you talk about any experience you have with backdoor pickup and what that capacity is?
Yeah, I mean, the unique part of that is, as we all know, as individual property owners, you've got private property. When people are coming on your property, people are concerned. I mean, I personally would rather put my trash at the street and have someone to pick up the trash at the street. And that's probably the most common way to pick up trash, probably 80% of most homes in the country. What's unique about backdoor services, you've got men that are physically, get off the trucks, walking through a yard, pulling a container, going through a yard, opening the gate, avoiding the dogs biting them in the leg, avoiding them falling over.
I don't have a dog.
Well, sure, but...
He might bite you. Yeah, I might bite.
They might have all kinds of creatures. You don't even know. But you've got the workman's comp issues. We all know insurance and workman's comp. And so you just have more risk in the workman's comp. So you've got to make sure you cover your costs on those things. Make sure your employees are conditioned and ready to do that type of work because it's not like just hitting on a truck and dumping a can behind the truck. The act is gonna get off, you got to go to back door. We did see a lot of curb side service, too. We saw a lot of people in this community that brought a lot of their trash to the curb. So you have 100%, you know, what percent do you put to the back door, what percent of people put it over the fence and rally. So I think it is a backdoor service, but I wouldn't say 100% of it is each and every day. The contractor's bound to do that. It's just you got to make sure, Council, you have enough people to do that type of work. And you got to make sure you have the assets, the trucks, and the capabilities to do that. So it is a challenge because you got to make sure you have a good, solid workforce to do that type of backdoor service. It's truly demanding. But it's been done in Jackson for many, many years. The workforce here has done it for many, many years. They know how to do it. And it can be done. It just costs you more money to have a service like that.
And we do have, we do that in some other areas, too. Bellmead, obviously. And backdoor is kind of a luxury item. And we also offer that in most of our markets for elderly or into folks as well.
But you would not do that here. You would be open to anyone who wanted that.
That's, the service is prescribed by the ordinance. I mean, we can't deviate from that. Yeah, we, it's the same.
I knew that, but I wanted to make sure I did.
So I mean, this is, it's a unique service for the community. The community gets a great service for the money you spend. I mean, not many communities have twice-a-week backdoor service anymore. It's just, it's kind of going away. In most communities in America, it's just not the most efficient, effective way to do the work.
It's a more attractive way.
Politically, it's a great way. And it is an attractive way. And I completely agree with you, Mayor, on that. Because if, you know, if you just set your trash at your door and somebody gets it, that's like an a la carte, a premium service. It really is. But it's the service that people in this community want. That's the service we submit a proposal for. We understand that. We've accommodated for that in our cost of service and our labor. And we're willing to provide that level of service.
I'm still coming back to the employees. I'm wondering how you're going to hire all the current employees when according to your proposal and our discussions with you, you won't need that many. So I'm wondering how to put an extra one on a truck or...
Where would the employees go if they don't have Waste Management? I mean, they're gonna be looking for...
No, I know, but I'm just asking, you know, that kind of is ambiguous to me. I couldn't quite understand that. So you're gonna find a place for them at some time.
Yes.
As far as the employees, we heard all the employees, as far as their benefits they have now, is that gonna keep all that, you know, or lose all that wages? And as far as...
Our wages are comparable. We've interviewed several folks and we're right on par with what they're currently doing. And our benefits package is strong. As Mr. Cooper has said, we've got some of the best in the industry. So I feel really strong about our compensation packages for folks in this community.
So you think they can pair better to what they have now? And the wages will be better?
I think so, yes.
They'll be better?
So let me understand, the conversation just happened. In your proposal, the workforce wasn't to the capacity of the current workforce. In the original proposal from Dr. Putz's question, is reduce workforce. And you made the commitment to hire the additional workforce to remain the same capacity. Wouldn't that increase your bid?
Well, no, our workforce is based upon our proposal. So I think we have the amount of routes that we have, multiply that by two people per route. That's the workforce in our proposal. We don't know the workforce that Waste Management has. We don't know 100% of what they have.
Nor do we know that solely for the city contract. Obviously, there's other services that we're looking to expand in the community and in the area that's not in the city limits. It would be outside of this contract. So therefore, we wouldn't perform those jobs or those positions inside that proposal. Does that make sense? So if we go across the interstate, or we go, you know, we'll obviously need more people to do that job. This is just for what was required in the city.
If we have the opportunity to come to this community, we're going to have the ability to compete outside of the community for other contracts and put more competition in the marketplace. Hopefully drive the price down to what the market price is versus what you're paying today.
And I remember one question I asked in the event you didn't feel you had enough vehicles. vehicles to perform the job to the quality that you guys want to perform, and I have no doubt that if you get the contract, you'll be doing everything you can to, to do the best job you can. But you mentioned that you could borrow from surrounding places.
Nashville and Union City, they're, you know, both less than two hours away.
What do they do when you borrow from them?
Well, we can, it happens a, a lot. Regionally, we'll move equipment depending on the need at the time. So if there's a natural disaster or there's a weather event, you know, we can move those assets around. If somebody's got a big project, big construction project, demolition project, industrial construction or things of that nature, you know, so we, we move assets around, and I mean, no different than any other company does, they move assets around all the time.
Excuse me just for a second. Cork Swift, are you saying you can't hear back there?
The council, they've turned the mic from their mouth.
This one won't go, I'm sorry.
Can you hear them?
You fixed it, did you fix it?
Can you hear them?
See, we, we haven't been able to fix it. Yeah, I just have to hold it, yeah. I'll hold, I'll hold it, it's, it's died on us. I'm sorry, Bart, it's died on us, okay.
I guess just to, to bring home the questions you've asked with regard to equipment, the equipment that's in our proposal is the equipment we need to perform this contract. If we need additional equipment, we'll lease it, we'll move it to another location. But without a doubt, the equipment's in our proposals, the equipment's sufficient enough to perform the services of this community. And we stand by that, and we wouldn't have submitted this.
And you're not talking about just the number, you're talking about the specific vehicles within that number.
Exactly.
You, you think you have, because I was very concerned whether or not you could do the commercial pickups with as few vehicles as you have.
I think the list of equipment that we put in our proposal was exclusively dedicated to this community. You know, the equipment that was probably, may have been put in the proposal, could have been the fleet of equipment that's parked at a location that services the city of Jackson and other customers outside the city.
Sure.
The equipment that's in our proposal is specific and exclusive to this city, not to another community outside of the city. We didn't take our regional fleet and, and.
Right.
Put the depreciation list in our proposal and say, this is all the equipment we have.
Yeah, we got that, that's why we didn't look that much at the number, we looked more at the kinds of equipment that, that you had, yeah.
While we're talking about that, the residential trucks that, that we proposed are smaller than the ones that are being used now because the landfill's within ten miles. That's going to be less impact on the city streets, obviously, but the bigger trucks, more wear and tear on the city streets, and, and obviously a bigger truck running is a little more inconvenience for the citizens. So we looked at that and, and tried to reduce the size as much as we could of those trucks to lessen the impact on, on the infrastructure.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions here. My understandings are, no matter who gets the contract, as far as the, what the customers pay, there will be no increase in their garbage pickup, is that correct?
Not one being proposed.
Okay, so it's not going to make any difference. Now, this three point, what, five million dollars difference that we have in, that's in the commercial rate, is that correct?
That's, that's total.
So at, at the end of the day, the, the city will get a.
It's, it's in the commercial rate, right?
It's on all rates, I think what, what they're alluding to is the contract cost us X number of dollars a year. Now, their contract is 3.2 million dollars less.
Okay, but that there, that, that doesn't go anywhere else but in health sanitation, is that right?
Health and sanitation is an enterprise fund.
It can't be used anywhere else, it has to stay in health and sanitation.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm right on that.
That's correct, yeah.
Can't build any parks with it, can't hire any policemen, can't, can't put any potholes in, that'd be nice if we could, but.
If there's no price increase, does the city absorb the difference in the current price that you're paying today versus what you would pay Waste Management, your word of that contract? You'd probably have to absorb some of that, it's over half a million dollars a year, so that's one thing that definitely.
Yeah, I understand your contract was a little more on, on residential pickup than what Waste Management was.
We didn't subsidize our residential service with our commercial cost, our cost of services with what the service is.
Well, primarily, we, where the difference here is in commercial. And so you've got actually, what'd you say, three commercial contracts here in West Tennessee?
Question as far as roll-off for, for contracting companies, right now, I mean, I have, have complaints about, you know, contractors and only Waste Management can use roll-off. Would it be the same for you all, company or companies like that, you choose who they want to choose?
Yeah, the, the current contract, Councilman Dodd, is an exclusive contract, meaning all residential, commercial, roll-off services in the city limits of the city are exclusive to the city's awarded service provider. It's not an open market situation like you have in other communities where you allow competition in the city limits. It's a closed market. And I think that's why you get more competitive prices. If this was open market, I think you'd have two companies competing back and forth on the prices.
Okay, any other, any other questions or representatives from Red River?
Mayor, if, if I may, good morning, gentlemen. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Foot and the committee for their hard work. This is a process, and many times we form committees and you sometimes feel that you're underappreciated, but we surely want to appreciate your work, Dr. Foot, and I, I hope you don't feel the need to have to make excuses or, or try to stand behind it. We stand behind you and, and the work that you did, so don't, don't, don't feel that way, and, and I hope that you don't.
I doubt.
I had just a few quick questions, if I could.
Sure.
And specifically, so that everyone knows and for the record, that you are prepared to do the backdoor two times a week pickup here.
Yes, sir.
Correct. And as diversity is very important to our community, could you speak to the diversity of your company, men and minorities relative to your board, relative to upper management, and relative to your employees?
Definitely, our, our, our vice president of operations, Arthur Jordan, will be an important part of this transition team. He is a minority individual, has been with our company for many, many years. He's a big part of our management team. He manages numerous operations for us, travels throughout the country, he'll be a part of this team. We look for the workforce, we, we, we're, we do a lot of federal contracts, military installations, and you are rated with regard to the, to the information you mentioned with your minorities, what is the makeup of your management team, what is the makeup of your workforce? And we've got a solid record of a very, very diverse management team, a very, very diverse workforce, and I think people are what make this work.
We've reached out locally too, to form partnerships with local individuals, historically minority-owned businesses here, and if that, if that comes to fruition, we, we fully intend to try to work with those.
Sure, and, and along those same lines, I'm glad to hear that. Would you be willing to make a commitment here today to include women and minority businesses relative to your small business or vendor program?
You bet. We, we, we've got a very, very solid record in subcontract work and buying materials and supplies from those minority vendors, and without a doubt, we will source those out and, and request quotes from every business in this community, because the, the material and supplies we need to do this work are going to be generated from business owners of this community, and we want to invest in that. We don't want to buy outside, we want to keep the money, expenses in this community, the way it keeps the economic development of this community viable, and that the money we earn, we want to reinvest back in this community into the local business owners to help make this community strong.
And speaking of being a community partner, how important is that to you if you were to come into our community, and, and what types of philanthropic endeavors would you participate in here in Jackson?
We have a strong annual scholarship program for, for both our employees and also outside of that, there's opportunities for, obviously, some, some college money for folks there. We have a, a lot of community involvement with the school system in Nashville, that's a wonderful program there, where we have an art contest that the city council votes on those, and then we go to the individual schools and, and talk about environmental stewardship, and, and they can see their artwork on the side of the garbage trucks and things like that.
And.
And we also sponsor events and sports teams and different things of that nature too, and, and try to, if like someone has events, we do our best to support those.
And relative to recycling, do you have a current recycling program, and would you bring that type of program here to our community?
We, we have recycling programs at many of our service locations. I know currently, there's not a contract requirement for a recycling program, but there's definitely means and ways to have drop-off programs to sponsor that. Maybe over time, we can work with the city and city staff to help develop maybe a curbside program. We do curbside recycling in other communities, and what that does, you know, it conserves landfill space, has the potential to save money and preserve lots of different things. Because there's a big, big green movement that we all know about, and currently today there's, there's not one, and if we could work with city staff and the council to help do that, we would definitely do that, because it's, it's, everybody, you know, it's got to be an environmental partner to the community, and that's definitely one way to move that.
You must be reading my notes, that was my next question. Relative to, I understand you would be purchasing some new vehicles for?
That's correct.
This bid, and would those vehicles be alternative fuel vehicles? Would they be compressed natural gas or propane or, or some other?
They'd be compressed natural gas. And one thing that's real, real interesting and dynamic about the RFP process, the city required that vendors provide fifty percent of their fleet to be a, a, a natural gas-powered vehicle, and by the fifth year to have one hundred percent of your fleet CNG. We have, in our proposal, said we would do that. We initially planned to bring in our initial residential fleet of garbage trucks to be CNG-powered trucks. We spoke with a gentleman by name of Eric, the J.
Eric Johnson.
Eric Johnson of Jackson Environmental Authority, and we said, you know, Eric, if we were able to do this, and we were making a proposal, could you guys fuel, you know, partial fleet on August 1st, 2016? He committed to us that he could do that, and that's another reason we moved forward this proposal, because there wasn't a means to fuel trucks, and if it wasn't for Eric and the JA, we wouldn't have been able to make a proposal to this community. So our proposal is bound by that requirement of fifty percent of, fifty percent of the fleet to be CNG-compliant by the second year and a hundred percent by the fifth year.
And, and my last question, and, and just correct me if I'm wrong, I did understand you say that you would be interested in hiring, hiring the current workforce, and that you do offer full benefits, full health insurance for those employees, part-time and full-time?
I think, I think, I, I, don't quote me on this, Councilman, but I'm pretty sure you have to be a full-time employee to receive that one hundred percent benefit. And what we mean by that, it's a hundred percent of the employee's cost that we have a, a, a scale for, you know, family members and a spouse and things like that. I'm, I'm not the HR person, but I can definitely get that, I can get that information, share that with staff.
That's important.
Yes, sir. But all of our employees will be given a hundred percent health and dental coverage at no cost to those employees.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Quick question as far as Nashville, do you have a whole Metro Nashville or a portion of Nashville as far as your contract?
Yeah, council, it's a really interesting contract. You have the, the Urban Service District of Nashville and you have the General Service District. What we have in 2004, when the city went out for bid, I think the, the contract was a hundred and twenty-five thousand homes. In 2004, our contract award was for eighty-six thousand of the hundred and twenty-five. Metro Nashville, I think, kept around twenty thousand, we were awarded eighty-six, and I think they had another contract, another small hauler there. So we didn't get a hundred percent of it, but we service currently today, that eighty-six has grown to around ninety-five thousand customers that we service each week. And the contract in 2004 was a ten-year contract, and through performance, we, we were fortunate to get a ten-year contract extension of that contract. And it's, it's been our flagship contract, we have been able to use that contract to help grow our business, and I, I, I thought that was powerful in our proposal to the city of Jackson, that we have a small business company that has a resume of having the largest residential contract in the state of Tennessee. Knowing it's not a commercial contract, but we have a lot of commercial work, it's just you don't see many opportunities to get a franchise where all services included in one contract.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, before Waste Management come up, can we pause for recess?
We're going to declare a ten-minute recess. Good morning, it is still morning, right? Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Dawn Cole with Waste Management, and this is Barry Marshall, and we appreciate you giving us a few minutes to speak to you on behalf of Waste Management. Waste Management received a request for proposal from the city of Jackson regarding its solid waste services, and based on those specifications, we submitted a final proposal designed to meet all the requirements requested pertaining to the scope of work with the best possible price. Waste Management believes that we are the best company to provide these services to the city of Jackson because we have an extensive history with the city of Jackson. We have been your service provider for thirty years, and because of that knowledge and experience that we have, we understand and know the direction that the city is moving. We know how to meet the needs of this ever-growing community, and through the years with the growth of Jackson, Waste Management has been able to maintain and grow our capacity to continue to meet the needs of the residents, the commercials, and the industrial customers of, of Jackson. In addition to these positive things that have happened with Jackson, there have been a few occurrences and visits from Mother Nature. And through these tough times with the tornadoes, floods, ice storms, or any other catastrophe that the city has faced, Waste Management has proven time and time again that we are a reliable service provider who has been able to meet the needs in the additional cleanup services that are needed. We have the additional staff and equipment here available to do those services. And we also have a national pool of our top performing drivers throughout the country that on a moment's notice are deployed to areas where natural disasters have occurred so that they can assist with the cleanup efforts that are needed there, and they also have the equipment available to do that. Our equipment here in Jackson is a fleet of twenty-three trucks, and that is between our residential, commercial, and roll-off businesses, and those twenty-three trucks serve the city of Jackson alone. We have six additional backup trucks that are for, in case of emergencies or if additional services are requested or required from the city. Of the twenty-three trucks that are currently servicing the city of Jackson, six of those are already been converted to compressed natural gas vehicles. This is an equipment investment that Waste Management made as a company several years ago. We wanted to reduce our carbon emissions by thirty percent as a company through the use of CNG vehicles. So to date, we have been able to reduce our carbon emissions by more than fifty percent, and we have over twenty-five hundred CNG vehicles throughout the country. And in 2013, when the city of Jackson was recognized with the City Livability Award for your efforts in becoming a cleaner, safer, more sustainable community, that's when Waste Management decided we needed to make the investment on our part in CNG vehicles so that we could support your environmental, environmental efforts and goals. Another investment that Waste Management has made here in Jackson is in our workforce. Two-thirds of our staff are city residents, are city residents in Jackson. We provide a very comprehensive pay and benefit package. We also put new employees through a high-quality, in-depth, off-site training program when natural attrition occurs. And our managers here in Jackson and supervisors frequently do one-on-one coaching sessions with our drivers and helpers to ensure that we continue to provide the quality service that we always have here in the city of Jackson. You can't ignore the history that we have. Jackson has grown exponentially over the years, and we have been right there with you every step of the way. We have an outstanding service history past here with you. We meet regulatory compliances, we have an excellent safety record, and we have the financial capabilities to efficiently and effectively meet the needs of the city of Jackson. The committee did a thorough job with the information that the various companies proposed, and at the end of their findings, their recommendation was for Waste Management. So I think that there should be no doubt that Waste Management is the most capable company and the better investment for the city of Jackson in its future. Thank you.
I'd also like to add a few comments regarding Waste Management and, and the proposal that we gave the committee.
Pull the mic to you, pull the mic to you.
I, I could mention, I ha, I do municipal marketing for the state of Tennessee and, and the main person basically that computes the bids, turns the bids in on collection and disposal contracts. So I, I deal with many governments, cities and counties. There are things that I could say to talk about Waste Management, the origin of our company from a Dutch farmer in nineteen-twenty who picked chicken slop and pig slop, and the fact that it's turned into a, a worldwide company now with forty-five thousand employees and, and capabilities that are, that are enormous. I could talk about the diversity awards that we get, the veterans awards, and, and on and on and on, but that, that does no purpose to this discussion of the decision you have to make. I could also talk about the fact that there's, there's assumptions. I could also talk about the fact that there's, there's assumptions that any of our employees would be willing or wanting or automatically leave our company to go work for somebody else, which isn't the case. But I'm not going to talk about that. What I want to talk about is the process that incredibly competent city staff went through, and then the committee in analyzing this and taking the time. The first thing I heard today discussed that Councilwoman Foot brought up was the fact that the time that it's going to take, if a change was to be made, to pull off this contract on August 1st. And you're already cut into that big time. I know this because I, along with Recorder Lefoon and Health and Sanitation Director Honeycutt, when we, when I was involved with the contract in two thousand, ten years ago, two thousand and six, when we came to the extension period in two thousand and eleven, we put in a date by which through the extension years, we and the city had to notify each other by December 1 of a previous year if there was going to be a change following August. So that's important to note. And so you certainly need to have a decision made by, by next month. This process, yes, this isn't rocket science, but it's big. When you pick up twenty-something thousand homes, thousands of commercial front-load dumpsters, and hundreds of bit, roll-off industrial counts, that's big. And it happens every day, six days a week. And so, you know, we've done it for a long time. And the reason I say that is we know how to compute the cost that's needed to provide these services. You have to do it with good people, and you have to pay good, and you have to have benefits. We threw all that into our bid. And I am not here to, to, in any way, talk about the fact that our, our bid is too high. It's, it's not. The, the problem is the other bid is too low. If you look at our costs that we computed and the prices we gave, we're in line with the other bidders. And the, the, basically, the price from, I keep, kept seeing, you know, it's put at three, going to say three million dollars over five years, three million dollars over five years. Well, there's always going to be a low-price option. Is it the best? Solid waste services is certainly something that falls in the category of you get what you pay for. Now, that doesn't mean that new companies can't start up. In my twenty-eight years in this business, one time, my wife and I started a garbage company. But that didn't mean we could go bid on a city the size of Jackson, Tennessee, or do something that was beyond our capabilities. You, your process involved checking out all bidders, the four bidders, and their references and so forth. And it came to the fact that the committee selected Waste Management as the best overall bidder. Now, yes. Now, the issue is, though, it seems a delay has come about because of the consideration of price. Well, that, that is what it is, and everybody sees the numbers. And, and, you know, that, that can be looked at and studied, but just because something is, is the lowest doesn't certainly mean that it's the best for, for an endeavor of this magnitude, a five and potentially ten-year contract for all of the industrial, commercial, and residential collection of the city of Jackson. So those are my comments. We, we have, have enjoyed our relationship many times through, through the acquisition when we came into Jackson in nineteen eighty-two, and then also the bid in ninety-six, the bid in two thousand and six. And we, we look forward to continuing the relationship for another ten years. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you all. Any questions from council or any comments to Waste Management?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate you, as well as, as Red River and other companies, for taking the time to fill out those proposals. Those are very detailed and comprehensive, and, and I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the job you've done for the city. However, we didn't take any of that into consideration. You know, we strictly took everybody from a level playing field. And while your rates were not tops with us, everything else was. That's just the way it came out. That's just what happens when you are comparing certain entities, when you're comparing experience, when you're comparing vehicles, when you're comparing references, you know, you know, and when you have a scoring system that by its very design is saying rates are important. And rates are. And certainly, I know everybody on this city council wants to save money whenever we can, or they don't need to be up here, as far as I'm concerned. That's important. And how you use taxpayers' dollars is important. But in my opinion, and the evaluation form that I did not design bore that opinion out. While I am conscious of taxpayers' dollars, I am more conscious of making sure we deliver quality service to our folks, our residential folks and our commercial folks. And so I was not bothered by the fact that the evaluation form was slanted toward that. I honestly, and I'm not speaking for the council, because many people on this council, they may feel rates are much more important, and they may vote on rates alone. I can't do that. I feel from the bottom of my heart that the expectations of quality trumps rates every time. Now, the problem here is it's a big difference. It's a big difference. And that's the dilemma that all of them are in. I'm not, but I have an advantage because, see, I got to look at the proposals, I got to talk to each of you, I got all my questions answered and so forth, got to check references, got to check references of, that some of you didn't write down, but you serve those cities, so I checked those out too, to make sure, you know, I had a good idea of all of it. And the others on the committee did too. But I want to thank you for your outstanding service. And however it comes out, we will always feel that Waste Management has been a wonderful investment for this city and for our citizens.
Well, thank you. We know it's a tough decision, that, that you'll make, make the right decision, and we appreciate the time this morning to, to speak with you. Yes, sir.
Before you get away, I got a couple of questions. You mentioned recycling, which I'm a big proponent of also. Is that something that y'all could, could work with this in the future or not necessarily this bid or something? Do y'all do recycling in other areas?
We, we pick up more recyclables than anybody in the world. And we have divisions and divisions about moving product and, and whole offices in our corporate office in Houston about recycling. You know, I personally have recycle contracts in the state of Tennessee that, that I've created for cities, Spring Hill, Tennessee, and just others. This, the, the scope of services requested did not ask for it, nor were any prices given, as you well know. But yes, of course, I mean, we, we can, we can and will consider any effort to help you with anything that's sustainable, recycling, alternative fuel vehicles, anything.
Okay. The other question is, is on the, the price you quoted, as far as what you're previously charging us, what's the percentage increase in that?
Well, it appears the other company, you know, has bid basically what we're doing it for now. The, the pricing now, in this tenth year of the contract, is actually less than the ninth year of the contract. I, I took the prices down because that's what the contract called for with the CPI, as you know, is, was, has been running negative lately. But, yeah, we, we've gone up from about six million dollars to, to, I think, six-point-six million dollars. Ten years have passed. And then the, the biggest point to this is what the city was requesting as far as newer vehicles, sustainable vehicles, the conversions we have to make to our shop to accommodate that. I mean, all of these things cost money. There's pay raises and insurance benefits and all that has to occur in that ten-year timeframe. So, you know, the, the way we computed it, I mean, it's, it's really not that large of an increase, given the, the length of time it's expired from the two thousand and six bid.
Okay, the, the difference, I guess, in previous then and current is about ten percent difference? Is that approximately? I'm trying to look at, say, you know, what the, what the increase to the cost of the city is going to be.
Yes.
To stay with you guys. Is it going to be a smaller amount than what we're thinking about?
From, from the present price, about nine percent.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions, council? If not, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right before we think this issue, I think if you could explain, someone can explain savings, this three million dollars, whatever, we've been discussing, that is understood to the people that that's not money sitting there. And I think we stated that it's money have to stay in the budget line and health and sanitation. It's not going to be money that we can use for the police department or to go to the parks.
One person wanted to go to schools, Johnny.
I think a lot of people are thinking that that's going to be money, that if we happen to go, go with Red River, that that's going to be money that we could use to do other things within the community. So I think that is one of the issues that a lot of people in the communities is having an issue with, when they look at three million dollars that we could spend somewhere else. So I think if we, as city councilmen, can even explain to our people in our districts or that that's not going to be money, it's going to be sitting there waiting. And it's other projects we need to do in our communities, but this particular three million dollars is not going to be something that we can use in other parts.
Sir, you want to address the council? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Keith Wilson. I'm the current owner of All Fiber and Scrap Recycling here in Jackson, Tennessee. I've been in the waste recycling and industry for about twenty-four years. I worked for two integrated companies all over the United States, Jefferson and Smurford Corporation. I ran twelve different recycling facilities in five different states and eight different cities. I've also worked for George Pacific for ten years, buying recyclables all over the United States. Relocated here in Jackson and purchased and opened up a recycling business three years ago. February first would be three years since I've been in Jackson in recycling. I'm here today as concerned resident and of Jackson, and also as a businessman, a small business owner in Jackson, you know, running a recycling facility here. There is a lot of misnomers here on recycling. One is, is that Waste Management does recycle here in Jackson. They haul all my recyclables. They also haul recyclables for my competitors here in, in Jackson. So Waste Management does recycle in Jackson. There is five recycling, paper recycling companies in the city limits of Jackson. There's three more metal recycling facilities in Jackson. So Jackson does a lot of recycling. My concern is, is that, you know, on the bid, there's a misnomer with the three million dollars as a big number. It gets a lot of attention. But if we, and I have faith in the city council, and especially you, Dr. Foot, of seeing the rating system. I have not seen the numbers, but in my years in the business and working in, in all the different cities and states, and, and I ran a recycling facility in Nashville and Memphis, and now the city of Jackson. And I've dealt with eight different waste companies through my twenty-three years of experience. Allied Waste, Republic Waste and Recycling, BFI, also Waste Management in multiple areas and small, family-owned recycle, waste haulers in different cities. And the creative way, I guess is the best way to put it, just speaking honestly, and I'm not here, you know, like I said, I'm here as an individual with, living in the city limits of Jackson, and also the business. Concerns me is the cost. I mean, once you get in, involved with a, a waste hauler, there's various costs, you know, size of container, the amount of service you're getting. Service, good service comes at a cost. And that's how I run my business, is saying I can compete tooth and nail with any competitor, but I'm going to control the things I can control, can control, which is the service. And my main concern is, is, is switching from a company of thirty years who's given good service. I've been here for three years. They're not perfect, but they work hard. And I'm not, and I don't know Red River. I've not been contacted by any representative of Red River. All my twenty-three years of business outside of Jackson, I've never worked with Red River, so I have nothing to say about Red River because I don't have any past experience. I have past experience with Waste Management and eight other waste hauling companies. But the concern I have is, is the cost and the service that will go up with the new contract if Red River is chosen. And I'd like to have opportunities, since we have tabled this for months, to be involved and see how this, and offer my expertise as a small business here, but also my expertise of dealing with, with various waste companies across the US. But, you know, I have faith in you. But today, though, there is a lot of areas there that I think the cost could go up, and that three million dollars could be higher cost of going with someone new. Because one of, one of my customers, you know, a food company here, if they don't get their waste serviced, the whole facility is closed down. You know, and if someone goes, we asked the general public to produce less garbage, and there's going to be service from twice a week to once a week, or, or various things can change. We need to look at service as from other cities that all the bidders have given, to make sure that we're going to get what they say they're going to do. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
One question to be asked. If not.
Who, who you want to ask it to?
I would want to ask this. It was mentioned that the three million dollars that theoretically could be saved cannot be used anywhere else. I just want to know why can't it be used anywhere else?
The, the state law prohibits that. The Health and Sanitation Fund is an enterprise fund, which the, any surplus that's generated has to be spent within that department or the confines of that department. Cannot be distributed throughout the city. That determination was made about four years ago by the comptroller, and I've gone up against him one time, and that's one time too many, so we're letting him have his way. You're welcome. Okay, council. Remind, at the next meeting, we have to have a motion, and I'll expect you all to head into to receive this off the table for final, final consideration. Item four under a new business is acceptance of contract with Motorola Solutions for a radio system upgrade. Ms. White, Ms. Lenonda, Chief Weiser, Chief Stewart, and Daryl.
We have lots of people to speak.
We may not have enough chairs.
I understand it's bitter.
Okay, Lenonda, uh, no, Ms. White. Your own.
Okay, thank you. As you know, lightning hit our radio system, and we need to get another one. Lenonda Jernigan is here, and she's been working with Motorola Solutions to come up with a, a radio system that will fit our needs. And she can tell you about the insurance money that we're getting back and the type of system that Chief Weiser and Chief Stewart have looked at, and they are all in agreement. This is the system that we need to have for our public safety, radio communications.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. End discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you all very much. You can go back to your seat now.
Can't leave you.
Okay, item five is consideration of appointment of Sam Dawson as interim city recorder, care of the duties of, of duty of the absence of Al Ruffin, who is on medical leave. We have a motion and a second discussion. Council, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with all members in favor except for one who's exiting.
Item six, budget amendments.
All right, the first one we have is for Jackson Police Department Patrol Unit to upgrade and replace in-car systems at the police department in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. This will require a fund, a draw on fund balance.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes.
All right, the second that we have is also a budget amendment from the Jackson Police Department from the federal equitable sharing account. Has the following purchases to be made: twenty-five Rettington shotguns with short-shelled carriers and slings. Total amount of budget amendment, sixteen thousand, four-hundred-and-three dollars.
So move.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
The motion passes.
The second part of that is the purchase from the federal equitable sharing for Barrett MRAD 308 sniper rifles. Total cost, sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
The motion passes.
The next budget amendment that we have is for Metro Narcotics. Due to recent changes, the Metro Narcotics Unit Two offices need to be equipped with furniture in the amount of two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, fifty cents. This will be a draw on the Metro Narcotics fund balance.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes.
The next budget amendment we have is for Central Dispatch on the radio system that you just approved in the amount of four million, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. The system was damaged by lightning. The city has received two million dollars in insurance proceeds. Once the project is complete, the city will receive another million, five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. Central Dispatch has a current capital budget of four-thirty-three, eight-sixty-four. The remainder will be a draw on fund balance.
Give us the reminder.
The remainder of that will be, I thought I had.
One oh seven, nine oh four.
Slightly over a hundred thousand?
Yes, just a little over a hundred thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
And second discussion. Council, please vote.
The motion passes.
All right. The next budget amendment that we have is for the Jackson Ball Park Clubhouse in the amount of $45,000 for security netting on the right and left side of the field seating in the amount of $4,800. This will require a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
And the last budget amendment that we have today is for City Hall capital equipment for the setup of security desk and monitors at City Hall in the amount of $6,000. This will require a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
Motion, second.
It's already done, isn't it?
Has to be paid for, counsel.
Some has been completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we voted on that? Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with one voting no.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration of board appointments. Mayor's advisory council and domestic and sector advisor reappointment is the following. Blake Anderson, Molly Britt, Jimmy Butler, Darrell Chancetut, Amy Hilliard, Mike Hope, and Lisa People. Have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
Under new appointees to that same board, Jennifer McGrath replaced Roger Wright, Mike Mosier replaced Sean Brown, Kim Parker replaced Keith Taylor, Michelle Reddick to replace Gency Spradlin, Leslie Tosh to replace Amy Jones.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
Under Keith Jackson Bureau, reappointment is the following. Sarah Graham.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
And a new appointment of Teresa Algefori to replace Evelyn Kille.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
Under the planning commission, new appointment for Pat Ross.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes. Well.
Final item is consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.